Oh, well, hey, we'll be done by the time you.
I know. I wish I could.
All right. We will call the meeting of BET for April fifteenth to order. Uh, we will do a roll call. Do you want to start?
Be one present. Where are you going around?
Let's go that way.
Okay, District Three present. And Clark present.
Brady Martins for District Two present.
Brandon Holmes for the Sheriff's Office present. Mike Morse for this side present.
Where can clerk clerk?
Uh, Christie Trevoy Miller for the Treasures Office present. Notice of meeting is properly posted April ninth of twenty twenty five. Uh, we'll start with item one. It's a recurring item to watch list. If there was anyone that has anything on the watch list to discuss. I know we still have a recommendation from our regular. Five thousand, but if there's any other items. No questions? Hearing none, we can move on, no action. Item two, discussion of possible action regarding an update on. John.
Easier to see on the screen than it is.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm sorry for the small print, but I had. So it's difficult to see, but I just want to make you aware of some recent changes that I've seen. Tracking them very, very closely. Now, as a reminder, for medical and prescription claims, we budgeted. An increase of eight hundred fifty two thousand for those combined for the year. As of March thirtieth, we had only gone into ninety thousand of that eight hundred fifty two thousand dollar increase. Does that make sense? We had that remainder left. Um, since March thirtieth, we received very large medical check registers. And there's a reason why it's not, not just random. Um, you know, Mars got behind on some of our claims, but especially our hundred percent network claims. So they have, they had a big backlog. And they just recently kind of made me aware when I started asking questions why these are getting larger. So what I've asked them to provide is the dollar amount outstanding and kind of what their timeline is to catch those up. So in March through, I mean, through April, um. We really, it's really increased. So we went from March thirtieth. We only spent ninety thousand of that reserve or that increase we budgeted. Now with medical prescription combined, we've gone kind of negative about a hundred and eighteen thousand over what was budgeted. So it's, it's not catastrophic yet. Just want to make you aware, hopefully those will even out. So I'm tracking it weekly. Um, I just want to make you aware that change because of drastic change since March, since March numbers. And it's solely based on our medical claim registers and solely based on that backlog they were trying to clear out. Um, and so I'm just waiting for information from them, watching it closely moving forward. Um, hopefully it'll trend back down, but I just want to make you aware of that.
So, so we were eight hundred fifty two thousand plus and now we're eight hundred or one hundred and.
Eighteen and negative.
Okay, so about a million dollar swing.
Yeah, about many, and we budgeted for most of that, but we're about a hundred and eighteen over what we budgeted at this point.
So with that budget, then also, so when you, when you say we're about a hundred eighty thousand dollars, that's trending it out for the end of fiscal year or that's just.
Current, current.
So if they stay high from here to the end of fiscal year, we might be in trouble.
Yeah, we might be in trouble. Okay, so we're watching that weekly. As a reminder, medical registers are received weekly, they're paid on the B O C C agenda. So watching those closely, still waiting for more information, but this is kind of such a drastic change in, in one month. I want to make it, um, bring to your attention, let you know the whys and what's behind it. And know that we're watching closely, I'll bring you an update as soon as I find one.
John. It won't make a difference on the bottom line, but what, what's the reason for UMR being slow and getting, is it providers getting the claims to them?
No, so, so, so it's kind of a double edged sword with carriers. UMR is considered a carrier, not a DPA, most self funding groups are with TPAs. Carriers have on the regular network a way better discount than any TPA can offer. So they kind of have the best net network, lowest discounts, but they're not equipped. No carrier pays those hundred percent claims except UMR. Blue Cross, Cigna, all those, they don't want to mess with it because it's outside their scope, basically. They want you to stay within their network, get their fees, blah, blah, blah. So those processing of that, those, the surgery center, we bribe heart hospital claims, those are all manual process. Um, it's a different process than regular insurance claims. So, you know, they're just trying to keep up with that new process and get ahead of it.
And that's not impacting those providers in a negative way.
Not yet. Not yet. We've been pushing some to the front of the line. Just for an example, um, if you don't realize the savings we get. In recent, about the last month, we had three serious spine cases. Regular, regular network, we would have paid a hundred fifty thousand each. And that's, that's a good price through UMR, um, through our special network, our hundred percent network. Those are about seventy thousand, so half price. But so we push those claims forward when we get those pays, those providers are happy to still see our patients. But I'm working with UMR to resolve the backlog. Find more information when I get. Much of a backlog remains. That's what I'm waiting for.
Do we know if the backlog is strictly confined to this current fiscal year or we're going to.
No, just current style, just current stuff. And when I look at each check register and dove into it, it's just those, those surgery center, spine hospital. Those claims that are causing that additional and, and, and in reality, if they had processed those timely, we would already saw those claims go through and kind of expected those costs. But when it all comes at once, you know, it's, 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 it's like a bigger impact, but we're watching it closely. And I'll let you know if anything comes up or changes.
Some of the backlog that come through, what are the dates?
So I think they're about six weeks behind. It's not too far behind, but it's six weeks behind, we don't want. Those providers can be paid timely. As really where we see our cost savings through those claims. Um, like I, like I told you about the spine hospital.
More questions or comments for John? Seeing none, John, thank you for that. No action. And a brief discussion of possible action regarding scheduled department meetings. To ask questions about the budgets. I don't know if there's anything we need to do on this item. We have today's schedule, I'm sure we'll get tomorrow's schedule. Where we that aren't on the schedule today or tomorrow?
Um, two, yes, but they're board members, so.
Okay. Anybody have anything on three? Seeing no action. Let Cody take you.
All right, discussion possible action related to policies and procedures for this year's estimate of needs. Is there anything anybody wants to discuss? Changes, modifications, additions, subtractions? If not, let's move on to item five. Discussion possible action regarding recommendation to transfer fifty thousand dollars from general fund reserve to planning commission. Special revenue for the Oklahoma County Master Plan. This was an item that was carried over from our previous meeting, uh, wanting to kind of have a little more. Allow members to have some internal discussions on whether we would fund this. If we were going to fund it, it seemed like as of last time, there was, um. An appetite to do a, a transfer for this particular purpose. It's just a matter of whether we were going to designate that transfer coming out of our one time. Reserve dollars or the annual reserve dollars. Any thoughts?
I'll make some comments first. I'm comfortable moving forward on this, so you can get started on his timeline for protests and all the things he has to do. I know we waited a long time to update the master plan. Uh, I also know that we were kind of toying with having wait and see whatever he can save. I'm, I'm always comfortable with the planning commission refund that they are very diligent about their funds and the fact that we save what? Fifteen or two hundred plus. Um, I know they don't come to the general fund unless they, they need to. So, um, with that, unless there's no other comments, I will make a motion to move fifty thousand out of the general fund reserve one time funds. For the planning, or the planning commission master.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second to recommend the budget board to transfer fifty thousand dollars from general fund reserve one time dollars. To planning commission special revenue fund for the updated, update to the master plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, a no. No, 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 three noes. I accidentally said yes.
Doesn't count.
Which I have it.
Reflex.
All right, so, uh, item passes five, three. Item six, discussion of possible action regarding general fund revenue projections for FY twenty five, twenty six. Everyone have the same revenues in the binder?
Do you have what?
Did you say these are in the binder? Well, sorry, no.
No. I thought that's what I said.
Yeah. I have the printout from the attachment.
If anybody wanted a printout from it with the tax, we have it for copies as you would like. Yes, sir. Oh, yes, yeah, they are full punch. I think, did anybody else speak once?
All right, so, hey, um, did you just leave there? Um, donate, uh, estimate, uh, I'm sure right now is the revow for the decision force. That's depending on the S S R budget, revow budget, uh, number. So that I just input what is last year's revow number in the projections for now. So, and of course, uh, looking through here, uh, you can see that the, uh, interest income is lower than last year. And that's due to federal rates and all that projection. So based on Mark's estimation on interest income for the county. So, uh, with all that being said. Looks like total sources available will be a hundred thirty eight million, two sixty four and twelve dollars.
Do you mind walking us through the balance?
Yeah. So the fund balance calculation, um, y'all need it on the screens to see where y'all have, look on the printout. Which, which y'all prefer?
Anybody that's watching online, is it a split to where they see that screen as well? No, their benefit maybe that looks like anybody.
So the top part there, the beginning of that catchback, the beginning catchback was seven one twenty four, thirty three, nine, three sixty one, four. And then with the twenty four, twenty five reserves, four million, eight thirty one, two eighty four for beginning fund balance.
Whoa, 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 slow down. Where are you at?
On your fund balance sheet, yours, uh, the top, the very top, top one. So between the cash, the cash balance and the reserves, the beginning fund balance. Would be twenty eight million, five, twenty eight, nine, ten. And then, uh, on the second column, their second row, your twenty four, twenty five budget revenue was a hundred nineteen million, one forty, seven, twenty three. And what we had projected for the revenue for twenty four, twenty five was a hundred and twenty six million, four thirteen, two forty eight. Which is, if you look on your statement of revenues, the column that says year to date projected FY twenty four, twenty five. Uh, on the total revenue, you see the one twenty six four thirty.
Your general fund reserve balance, what does that have? The eight million, one ninety six, four forty.
Uh, that's the most recent. Year to date, all right, most recent, uh, ten.
I think it's.
Yeah. It's eight point, oh, uh, or, yeah, that's due to. That's due to, um, uh, I had, I had to deduct the employee benefits watch list item. And then, uh, BT recommendation, recommendation on seventy five thousand to come up with the eight million one. Based on what was done previously in your tax. To get to that reserve amount.
So you took out the two sixteen.
Yes, and then that's seventy five.
Those would both be considered ongoing. So could we assume that our one time funds on the, on the watch list today is, would be the one time funds in this eight point one?
Yes. It's on the, the fund, the fund.
So. The only. And I did not have time to check. Um. The fact that the one time funds are in there makes total sense why the fund balance higher than say the last two years.
Yeah.
What, what I want to check or what we need to maybe check on is your beginning, beginning cash balance of seven, one, twenty four.
Okay.
Um, thirty three is considerably higher than the previous two years, beginning cash balance. I just need to make sure that there's not one time funds sitting in there as well. So July one, one time funds had not been moved to reserve until September.
Right.
So I'm afraid we're kind of maybe, and I, I can't say for sure because I haven't checked, that we might have some one time funds. In this fund balance calculation twice, if that makes sense.
Yes, it makes sense.
So what we need to do is on the thirty three, um, I just remember starting this year with a balance. I think included some one time funds there as well. And what I, what I'm questioning is the fourteen, the amount from the sheriff, I think we got in twenty three, twenty four, but I'm not a hundred percent.
No, I think you're right.
So I just want to make sure we're not picking up some one time funds twice.
Right.
Would be the thing to check on.
Okay, all right, we'll go back and check, make sure, double check.
Fifty, is our ARPA balance so low that we anticipated just seven hundred fifty thousand in interest?
Um, so our office has gotten some communication that they're going to really start spending a lot of it.
Okay.
Um, I will say ARPA balance is very difficult to estimate. Um, let me read you the comments from Mark. Um, he did have a higher estimate, but when those emails started coming. When those emails started coming in, he adjusted. Um, I will say Mark is extremely conservative. Um, and I think he may not put words in his mouth. Um, and he just, he just did this recently, just before these were done. I know it was a combination of spending the ARPA money and some more rate cuts. Well, I can't put my finger on it. I would be happy to, if we want to maybe.
I'm sure Mark can, I just, I just didn't know what the ARPA was. He's, he's pretty smart with that stuff.
I think it was four and now he's down to one seven.
Yeah.
I mean, some's been spent, there's possible rate cuts. What we could do, since Albert's got something to check on as well, we can maybe defer this item to tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, like, I mean, from last year.
That hasn't been posted.
He estimated what, forty, that's your seventy fifty, so, I mean, not even twenty five percent of it. So I just don't know if there was that big of a change in the ARPA.
And take that back, we've already posted for tomorrow, so. Um. Then the only other thing. All right, this afternoon after recess. For you to check on the beginning fund balance. Okay, defer it to later in the agenda.
Do we want to wait to discuss anything else?
Yeah, I think we continue the discussion. Yeah, I'm sorry. Throw in that idea. I, that's kind of all I had initially, other than when it goes to budget board. I noticed just little things to clear up, we're still on the revow, the next. Still referring to a twenty two laps and some stuff on the bottom left. And then on the second page, I'm going in order, uh. It was emailed to us, it looks like there's, um. What's this function on this? The amended budget plan. Twenty four, twenty five, it looks like on item nineteen, we, we've accidentally put in three hundred and fifty thousand. And then the remaining three, two numbers need to be moved up. So it, so that column's not matching the first page. The only other thing. On this page, column two and four, we add together, it should equal three. But it doesn't do that on total intergovernmental.
Where was that at, Christine?
Um, I'm linking at page two when it was emailed to us. Um.
In what line is it?
Um, well, the first one was item nineteen, in column one. The amended budget for forty four, twenty five. It was just, it looks like it was just three fifty was put in there twice, two lines.
Yeah.
Um, really, the election board salary is, the two figures below it need to be moved up. And then the, I'm not sure on the, all the calculations work for the sources. And these are those dark gray bars across. One for total charges for service, all the others need to take column two. And add column three, which makes sense. But the, the calculation doesn't work out, I'm sorry, not charges for service, total intergovernmental.
Is it?
Are you censoring yourself?
It's obviously.
And then it'd just be the bottom bit note on that page two, just updating that. I think that's all, all I have.
Christie, when you, uh, in those, um, areas that you identified, did you calculate what you thought the number should be? Or were you just throwing those out or?
The, the column, the first column, that three difference in there, that column should match the column on page one. It's just, it should be identical.
Right.
And then I did not. It's not off by a lot.
Is it just a formula issue?
I'm thinking so.
Okay.
But I'm not sure.
Is that something that we can get fixed in the break as well?
Yeah.
I bet it's actually just the April, June figure that might be in there.
So it's been a while since I've stepped here. But Albert, on, on this sheet.
Yes, sir.
You've got your, um, twenty four, twenty five projected revenue at one twenty six, four thirteen, two forty eight. And then on this sheet. The year to date projected revenue is one twenty six, five eighty three, six thirty eight. Do those numbers? I might have just missed something that.
The one twenty six, four thirteen, that was on the current year to date, uh, budget. So should, kind of expanding.
kind of expanding on Joe's point, should that number be listed on this front page then? For your estimated twenty-four, twenty-five instead of the one twenty-six, five eighty-three, six thirty-eight? Should that be the one twenty-six, four thirteen, two forty-eight?
Yeah, and, uh, part of that is, I know. Let's do it, let me get back to the numbers. I know that back again does something on the year-to-date. I'll have to go back and look at my notes. But I believe it was due to the misligned revenue, uh, for the PBA on your first page there, same revenues, the PBA residual and the PBA in first. So I'll have to double-check that to make sure.
Man, I was looking at your estimating twenty-four, twenty-five projected revenue to be a little over seven million dollars more than the budgeted.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where that extra seven million dollars is coming in. And it looks like on one of the things here, juvenile detention services, the actual revenue, well, I'm, I'm sorry, the budgeted revenue was the two-point-three million. But your year-to-date projected is two-point-eight-four.
Right, and that's based on, I believe, the increase in the day rate for what it was last year. I'll even double-check it.
So is that calculating in that that increase in funding looking in at?
Would would that just be the salary?
That'd be the salary bump. That, that's what I was looking for Hannah for, was to see if that number was reflected of that increase for the salary. Yes. I didn't know if that's what that is or, or what. Cause I'm trying to figure out on that seven-point-two million, is, is that, is that money that is associated with one-time increases? Like, you know, we estimated so much on ARPA interest, but we got more, we can't expect that to carry forward? Or are those, is that seven million dollars revenue that we can quasi-count on that increase going into future fiscal years?
And looking at our sheet that we used last April,
Mm-hmm.
um, the note says that the bed, the day rate for beds was one twenty-five, fourteen.
Correct.
And now it's one fifty-five, sixty-four.
Right, but did we, I know they, they changed that because of the salary bump increase, but did we get those funds yet this year? Or is, is that what they're gonna include in the next contract?
I think we're getting it in our ears, right?
I thought so too.
Yeah.
Hannah, Hannah will be here this afternoon.
Okay, let's, let's verify that because we need to make sure that that's accurate. And without sitting here going through and looking at the map, on that front page, when you've got the change from twenty-four, twenty-five budget, you see that column?
Mm-hmm.
Is that column referencing a change from the twenty-four, twenty-five budget to the twenty-five, twenty-six projections? Or is that change from twenty-four, twenty-five budget the difference between the amended budget and the year-to-date projected FY twenty-four, twenty-five?
It's the difference between the amended budget and the projections.
Okay. And, and this is probably a silly question, but if the change from twenty-four, twenty-five budget column is the difference between our budget versus what you're calculating we're gonna end the year with, the end there, it's a negative number. It's negative nine million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. But you're showing an increase of seven million on the fund balance sheet. That's a swing of sixteen million dollars.
Right, it looks like the that, negative one million, two thirty-six, one forty-one. The way the formula is set up, it's taking that fund balance of that twenty-eight million, six oh one, which is at the very bottom of that first column, uh, subtracting that from that seventeen, three sixty-five to get that negative eleven. Then they take that negative eleven and the total revenue, which is that one point five six oh, to get to that negative nine point six. Um. I'll have to do some double-checking because I'm just going off what was done previously, so. I'll need to look back and see. Uh, that's how, that, that's been calculated years prior, but yeah, I'll be double-checking on that.
Yeah, cause I mean, even if it's just taking that difference there on that one fund balance line item, then your difference should be the, the seven million dollars
Right.
there, but it's not. It's only a, a two million dollar difference between that, well, not even two, between that nine-six and that eleven-two, so that doesn't count for for all of that. So, yeah, if you can check on that as well.
I've got the sheet from April of last year. And it's kind of, it looks that way too, but not.
But see, in that change from twenty-four, twenty-five budget, the reason why what we were looking at, whether it was the difference between the amended budget and year-to-date projection, or the amended budget in next year's projections. If you look at the amended budget or interest income, it's six million. The year-to-date projected for twenty-four, twenty-five is seven point one million, so that's one million, one hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollar increase. But you're showing a three-point-five million dollar decrease. So.
Yeah, on that particular example, I think it's column one, the amended, showing a negative three point five to get to the two point five.
That's projections for twenty-five, twenty-six. Did I?
Oh, I'm sorry. Whoa.
Yeah. Albert, did I hear you wrong a minute ago when you were talking about the change from twenty-four, twenty-five column?
Yeah, and then on that one specifically, on that interest income, uh, that with that seven point one, that seven point one, and if you look on page two, at the total interest income, column two, uh, that's your the actual revenue, which is a six, uh, one fifty-one, plus the April or June twenty-five estimated in, income that's still projected to come in, that's how you get to the seven point one.
I get that, but I understood you to say, and I may have completely misheard you, but when I asked a minute ago, the change from twenty-four, twenty-five budget column on that front page.
Page one.
Is that the difference between what you're projecting for twenty-five, twenty-six and the amended twenty-four, twenty-five budget? Or is that change column reflective of your year-to-date twenty-four, twenty-five projections versus the twenty-four, twenty-five amended budget?
Um, it's based off what's currently there in column one, your amended and projected, the difference between the two.
The projected for twenty-five.
Projected for twenty-five, twenty-six or projected for the, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five? Okay, I understood you to say projected twenty-four, twenty-five. I mean, no, it was probably minor, so.
Column one.
And that, and that's where I was off on that interest income, because I was comparing.
Right.
So do you have a, a page that you can make available to us that breaks out the year-to-date projections for twenty-four, twenty-five versus the budget? Basically a breakdown of the total revenue collected for this year over budget, that's seven point two million dollars from the fund balance. Do you have something broken down that explains where that seven point two million dollars is coming from?
I think yeah, I can work on that, dude.
I think if the numbers are right, so on the section you're talking about where it calculates seven point two million, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget revenue, the one nineteen.
Uh, I'm sorry, where are you at?
Um, is she?
Yeah.
Is she, um, where it's, it's calculating the seven point two. The twenty-four, twenty-five budgeted revenue should be page one. At the bottom where it says total revenue, it's a little off. One nineteen, three thirty-eight, four seventy-one.
Right.
But that delineates that figure.
Mm-hmm.
And then the year-to-date projected, column three.
So one twenty-six, yeah.
Six, and it should be matching.
Is it?
So that would be your two lines of out he's.
Yeah, and, and I get where he's come up with that. What I'm wanting to know is if he has a document that shows.
Just those two, okay?
Yeah, yeah, for instance, uh, motor vehicle states, three hundred and ninety thousand, six oh six was the budget. Our projection is three thirty-two, oh ninety-three for a negative amount of whatever. That way I can just look at the, without having to do line item math on each one to figure out where that seven point two's coming from. So I can just look at that and have a snapshot to see where we've done better in, where we've done not as well as we projected. And those areas, once we know where they are, is that something that we can forecast and project into the future? Or is it something that's a one-off, like the ARPA interest that we don't need to really consider? Any more discussion?
So you're wanting the amended budget, year, year-to-date projected, that's the difference, is that what I'm understanding, buddy?
Yeah, okay. If it's, I mean, you don't need to spend a whole lot of time because I can do that myself. I just didn't know if you had, you know, in an Excel documents where you can just go in and do a formula, your differences, you know, just insert this column and insert this column and then do a formula just to do the difference.
Yeah, do something like that.
Anybody else have anything on revenue projections?
I will make a motion that we defer this to the end of year.
Without objection, we'll move this to the end of the agenda. I guess we are on item seven, correct? Discussion possible action regarding F twenty-five, twenty-six estimate needs. Uh, looks like we have Mr. Barnes from Emergency Management first. We're already a little bit behind this year. Our focus is going to be wanting you guys to highlight differences in budgets from, you know, last year to next fiscal year of increases and decreases. And if there's any, you know, big things that you think we need to be aware of. So.
No problem. Appreciate this opportunity. Bottom, you'll work your way up. Uh, my budgets are actually quite simple, and in keeping with what Mr. Compton just said, I'll just throw out the beginning. I've got five cost centers. The L E P C, the combination cap, communication infrastructure, and emergency management, uh, special revenue. There are no budgetary implications on any of those. There are no uh, additional liabilities or anything, no requests will be made for those funds. I think one of the greatest detail on this, what we want, and one that really.
Let's focus on general funds.
Yeah, it's the general fund. Uh, I started off with personnel costs. Those are based on personnel costs to date. There's no COLA or other adjustments included in the numbers that I have there. You'll notice I have retained the administrative assistant position in there that we are working through, uh, tweaking job description to get that position refilled. When Miranda left the county, that left us with a gap in the ward that continues to slap us on a daily basis, but we are going to retain that position. Travel has a slight increase of ten thousand, two hundred dollars total. Um, that is based on continuing education, required education issues that continue to come up, increased training levels. Maintenance and operation is a total liminal request of ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. I think that's only a couple thousand dollar difference from previous year. Capital outlay are three items that we've got listed. One is furniture for the new emergency operations center currently under construction out of Kraus, and this is a new request of ninety thousand dollars. And this basically, um, oh, emergency management, we own one desk and one condemned at four, four offices out at the regional emergency coordination center. That's all the furniture we own. The remaining office furniture and the other desk and issues that we're using out there are owned, they were grant-funded and they're owned by the city book, on the city. But we actually have no furniture other than that one desk. And then we have a dribble of, and that, by the way, is over twenty-five minutes old. We have a little bit of furniture here, but we are retaining the facility. So we are requesting ninety thousand dollars to at least get a start on furniture for the new emergency operations center. It was recommended at one time that we utilize furniture off of the fourth floor that was set into the dumpster. And find that to.
Question for you.
Sir.
On the, uh, capital outlay, you've got the sixteen hundred and fifty dollars where there's no line item to the left that you're not requesting this year. Just wondering what that was for.
Oh, that was computer equipment that was in previous year's budget, it just retained on the form. And we are, uh, enjoying that, that current year's funding.
Hey, David. Sir, will you remind us again, on your, uh, rental space in the department?
Yes, sir.
It's twenty-five thousand.
Correct.
And that's an annual amount?
Correct.
And the new operations center opens up for you? That amount will completely go away, drop down, uh, we just, where, where are we looking at there? And the timing, what are you anticipating the opening of the new?
Anticipated, uh, anticipated opening of the new facility that they're currently telling us that we'll likely have availability in October. So there is a potential for a partial year. And we'll have to negotiate that through the agreement with Oklahoma City. Uh, it is our expectation when the new facility is made available, that twenty-five thousand will go away.
So this ongoing expense that you have, since I've been here probably, will go away.
Correct. The second capital request is public safety equipment. Uh, this is likely what you're already familiar with. We provide two cabin chassis units to Oklahoma County Fire Rescue Departments. And that is in exchange for the fire rescue and medical services that they provide in the unincorporated areas. Uh, the types of equipment that they use these for end up costing between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars per piece of equipment. And we provide a cabin chassis that actually reinforces that partnership with the local jurisdictions. We're bringing roughly sixty-five, sixty-eight thousand dollars to the table for the cabin chassis. They provide the remainder of the upfitting for those units, and it's a win-win for us. Plus, it's also, as I said, it's in the current full provision of, uh, DMS and fire rescue services in the unincorporated areas. And the third item is for two additional outdoor warning devices. We've been able to include these in recent years. And, uh, this is just to continue to provide coverage in the unincorporated areas. A lot of municipalities have their own systems. And obviously, the areas that Oklahoma County is responsible for, with the exception of what we provide, uh, there is no outdoor warning in those areas. And I was just, uh, a note of interest, you know, number three tornadoes at the end of last year. We have two devices directly in the path of invited warning during that. So that, that, with the terms, I call that R O Y.
David, where is that in your budget?
I'm sorry?
Where is that in your budget?
That is in the, uh, capital request, public safety. It's part of the two hundred thousand.
Oh, part of the two hundred, okay, okay.
Those are estimated at, and current quotes that we're working off of, a thirty-two thousand dollars per unit. And we're hoping to, uh, acquire two additional units.
If not, is there a motion to receive the estimate needs for emergency management?
Go move it.
You have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to receive it. The general fund estimate of needs for emergency management, those in favor say aye. Any opposed? I just have it, may I say?
All right, uh, Karen, Ken, speak over.
Good morning. We, why don't we pull from the general fund and we add up the other special funds? If you want to go over to my, if I request work change, I have a little bit of difference. In travel, I ask for a thousand dollars extra because of us being out in the field more and have to reimburse the mileage. Maintenance and operation, I ask for twelve hundred dollars more. And my memberships, professional memberships are very high and expensive right now. And I have four people that want to be certified and get the memberships for their specialized area that they work for. Um, professional services, I ask for eleven ninety-nine, fifty-two cents. Again, that is just for the cost of things going up to help my staff be more professional and educated for themselves. Capital outlay, I ask for twenty thousand, five hundred. That is for the other half of the AEDs to replace in the courthouse. And we'll also have to put them in the, um, investors' capital building when that distributed, all those are gone. We have to finish those AEDs. The last thing I need to possibly increase more was to get a vehicle for our department. Um, most of my staff have low-riding vehicles, and when they're out in the fields and yards, it's really hard on their vehicles to muckers and everything. So we threw that in there for the possibility of a vehicle for us to use for our department, uh, instead of having to use our personal, this fellow.
I've asked this before on facilities, have you visited with the districts to see if they have any vehicles that they?
Well, I currently have a vehicle from one of the districts. Um, things like, they've got two hundred thousand miles on it, and I refuse to ride in it. It's that bad. Um, get onto the I forty, you're I thirty-five, you have to really, you go, and you can't get speed up trying to get on the highway. So we are using that right now, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't ride in it, just because I don't feel comfortable.
Well, the man others.
Yeah, exactly.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, you're good, I'll check with the others. Uh, one of the districts did offer to let us use a pickup, but it has stipulations on it that one of us had to take it home every night, we had to park it in a certain place, and we didn't need all that. So we just have, but we didn't.
Karen, how much is an AED?
I think it's about twenty-five hundred to three thousand.
Okay. If your increase there, is that all for AED?
Yes, yes. And batteries when you have to, they're pretty expensive as well.
And then back on your professional services.
Mm-hmm.
What is that again?
Those are certifications, like kind of H R certification, the SHRM certification, uh, that sort of thing.
That's something that the board has asked you to do.
Yes, that is correct.
Am I on the other?
Yes, and both of my H R staff are currently working on getting there.
I didn't have anything else? Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Let me ask you more, back on mileage.
Okay.
Um, so you reimburse, is the, what, who's gets the mileage allowance? That you, Mr. Director?
All of my staff get mileage allowance, uh, because we all use our personal vehicles around the fields, going to training, Stillwater, Tulsa, uh, some of our classes, they all use that in our reimbursement of mileage.
Is that your reimbursement, that you use the federal fee?
Yes, that point seven-two, point seven-five.
So they're getting that rate, and then they're also getting a mileage allowance?
No, we don't get mileage allowance in my, well, we got it.
You got two hundred there. Pardon me, you got two hundred under mileage.
And I don't know why that's there, to be honest. I think it's been there since I've been here for twenty years. But no, none of us have opened that place.
I think you can probably take that out.
Yes.
Okay, now that's all.
Anybody else have anything? If not, is there a motion to receive the general fund estimate for H R home safety?
With the one change Christie and Karen just talked about, about less than two hundred?
Yeah.
And Karen, you'll get a new one submitted with the two hundred removed from it signed, and then the clerk's office can provide all of us with a one-two outdoor book.
Sure.
One, actually, I do have one question. On the vehicle lease, is that, so, how long's that lease term? Do you know, I mean, that's, that's a twenty-three hundred dollar payment per month?
What are you talking about, I'm sorry?
Like, I think it's not purchase, the leases.
Oh.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, it would just be a purchase of.
Got it, okay, okay.
And that would be shared amongst employees, or?
Yes, it's not just one person. It would be all five of us would use it.
So that would theoretically cut down on the.
Miles, yes, sir.
All right, we got a motion, a second to receive the estimate needs for H R home safety. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have it. Nate, uh.
Oh.
Yeah, Joe, Joe did a second. Christie made the motion, Joe.
I clarified, but I thought the motion was.
Yeah.
Can I, is it too late to ask one more question?
Well, she's not.
She doesn't know.
But. But yes, you can.
Uh, the, the B O C C financial support specialist, if that was going to get moved? Now that, for the county manager. She mentioned five employees, but there's six here, so. Maybe that's something we tackle all at once, as far as, I think, possible salary for that new, the new county manager position is coming.
That's going to be for the budget board this week.
So on her salary projection, you'll be there with the decrease? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll let you not overbite.
Paul, you said it's going, what's going forward?
It transfers some over to cover, transfer the financial support specialists that we're making, uh, over to cover salary for the county manager.
Then she would need that in her budget.
Correct.
Do you want me to see if I can catch him?
Why don't?
Well, it says on the B S C financial specialist, she's got it in her request, it says will be.
Oh, it looks like she's. Twenty-six thousand dollar to your part position?
My understanding is this is the dated version, and there's enough. I'll be happy to follow up with her.
Okay. So is the intent at budget board going to be just to move that position and the salary dollars into a different budget? So that, that budget that it's going to go into will need to be changed as well? The estimate needs that is.
That's, is it twelve hundred account there? Is that right?
Yes.
Just going to do that?
Yeah. So actually, I need to look it up. So move it back to where it was a couple months ago.
I think it is. And commissioned one twenty.
Yeah, it says general fund one twenty, uh, two general fund one twenty, excuse me, fund two sixty.
Yeah, that's where it was before.
Is that what you're going to?
I believe so, yeah. I'd, uh, look up the. So, Kathy and others, what we may want to do then is wait on Karen submitting a new estimate of needs, sign with a two hundred dollar remove from it, until budget board, because if budget board approves this, then our estimate needs will need to change it again. Same with the, uh, the commissioner's budget. So we may need to receive new estimate of needs for both of those accounts next week or sometime after that.
Some reason the numbers don't match. No, it's not compared or anything.
She's got. Want to tell you?
Thirty-five, one thirty-two?
Yeah, twenty-five, one thirty-two, eighty-four.
Thirty-five?
Uh-huh.
Thirty-two, and four.
Thirty-five, one.
Yeah, and so they're transferring thirty-six, six thirty. Well, if there was a payout beforehand, that might be a little, yeah, leviation, something. She's suffering. Yeah. Hey, was the, the grant writer position was over into there as well?
Right. I don't think you'd ever move Cody, I think he stayed within that account.
Yeah.
I know she started there, but at the very end, the grant writer reported to Karen, but I don't know if.
Right, but we never officially moved it.
So I would come in with the dollars to follow.
Okay. Oh, I think the, the intent was, but then everything kind of got bended right there.
I think that's correct.
Alrighty. All right, anything else on H R? If not, Mike, you are listed next, but do you mind if we move on? And, because you're going to be, are you going to be here most today? So, some of our directors and folks that are in here, we'll move to, uh, Mr. Wilkerson is next on the list. John?
Good morning, Jen. I'll just start with our benefits retirement, our budget. We'll start with that. As a side note, we need new computers because of Windows updates. Our computers are not going to operate in October. I didn't include this in the tender request, but I'll need to add it at some point. Uh, because I now know that's coming. Um, really, the only adjustment I made on here is backed out some bike and retirement that were activated incorrectly. So there's a reduction on those, our, our budget of six hundred and eighty dollars. I made no other changes to our departmental budget other than that, so it's actually a reduction of six hundred and eighty dollars. But we do, at some point, need to get three new computers. They'll cease to operate, and what I, I'm told, in October.
Well, why didn't you put it in your budget?
Well, from my understanding, I thought we'd run along the pipeline budget at first and then address those needs later, so that's why I added.
We need to have you get it in there, so.
Yeah. We have very old computers, a little tiny box, it's not even the real computers.
So let's, let's do this, John. We can, we can receive your estimate needs today, and then, assuming we'll have an agenda item on tomorrow to discuss any that have already been received and addressed by B E T. So if you want to go back and update yours, add the three computers tomorrow under that other one, we can receive. Sounds good, sounds good. And then next, or, any questions on that one? Anybody have any questions? Very simple. Is there a motion to receive the estimate needs for employee? Run budget, twenty-five, twenty-six? Got a motion, move it a second? All right, you guys want to rock, paper, scissors? Did you get, second, okay. All those in favor? Aye, aye? Come on, guys. I didn't hear you. Any vote? I just have it. Uh, just for the record, Carla, I don't think you're officially on the committee yet, so you have to sit here and give all the input that you want, we just can't technically count your vote right now. Um, so, I just want to make sure that the record number is good. Okay? But please offer all the input, and you can, if you know that your office would vote a certain way, you can, you can say that we just can't.
That's welcome, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, uh, yeah, John, social services?
Um, county pharmacy. Um, our request is reduction of one point three million dollars versus what is budgeted this year, um, because of the changes in that department. Let's go down to the detailed itemization here. So just, I'm going to highlight some changes.
Can you give me just a second, I'm trying to locate it here in my book? Real life of the church. Yeah, I don't know who knows where books are. Sneaky taz.
Um, so, so the first item is, is a fifteen thousand dollar increase on postage, as you know. Now we're, we're running seventeen hundred scripts out in the mail a month, so doubled that amount, thirty thousand, fifteen thousand. Um, if you will go down. Um, if you will go down a little bit more. Um, you'll see there's three items here. Um, Kraken Label, shredding, Walker Company. Um, I couldn't locate those on the prior budget with appropriate codes, but those codes correspond into those items. Uh, those are included in the budget, I'm not sure where they're at, but I went ahead and put them under the correct codes there and listed them out. Um. So those aren't new, new items, they were somewhere contained in those, but they weren't coded properly, so I just put them under the direct code there, those three items. And then the changes, the capital outlay, we, we're desperately needed a, a, a new computer software to run the pharmacy. Um. The one currently have is how old? Many years old. So I've got an eight thousand dollar request on that. And then they also need a new computer, one of their computers is gonna be outdated in October, just like ours, so I added two thousand in for, um, a new computer. And then we flip over to salaries. What are the only cha, of course, we adjusted off the old positions for a little longer. Um, I increased the part-time pharmacist by ten, nine thousand, eight hundred and one dollars, just because of increased volume we're seeing now. Uh, we probably need some more coverage, but that's really the only change I made on the salary calculations.
John, so this, this is now strictly the pharmacy?
Correct, strictly the pharmacy, except we're still. You what?
You progress.
Oh, except the hundred and sixty thousand for the daily living centers that they're handling in their budget. Everything else is dedicated to pharmacy.
That's the one sixty-three? Daylight, that's.
Yes, correct.
That, that could be pulled out of this budget and twisted as a line item. It was specific statutory authorization.
Yeah, I think it, it needs to be, it needs to be pulled out, they, your department has nothing to do with any of that. So, it, and I think this budget needs to, we need to one of two things. We either need to do a line item in general government where we transfer a certain amount over into the Employee Benefits Department. Not your department, but the Employee Benefits Fund, or change this from Social Services to Pharmacy. It, it needs to be clear, this is not a Social Services budget, this is a pharmacy budget. So I don't know if you guys are interested in making one of those two changes. But if so, I think we should look at either changing the name of this budget, I don't know of the intricacies of changing the name of a budget, but either changing this from Social Services and just make the name Pharmacy and leave the account numbers and everything the same. Or whether you wanna, I, I was thinking that we would just transfer everything into the Employee Benefits, but this, we're able to see it a little bit easier this way, if we're gonna be doing a general fund transfer every year to, to fund a piece of it. Maybe we want to have a standalone general fund pharmacy budget for a while, until we kinda get a handle on those expenses and everything that's gonna be there. Just dump one line item into the general, general, but. Up to you guys, whatever.
John, what are your thoughts?
We do, for sure, I think the name needs to be updated, County Pharmacy. Um, so that's kinda active reflection of what they actually do. Uh, we can combine it to the Employee Benefits Department, we're all one basically now, we work together, they, they work, uh, you know, for the plan, basically the help plan. Um, but it's at your discretion how you wanna handle that. I'm fine either way, two separate budgets or combined, all into the Employee Benefits Department budget.
Two?
I think two as well, and then change the name. That way we can track it as well.
And this kind of side note too, you know, we started on a commercial operation in February, so there's really money comes back and goes into the prescription rebate, um, as a rebate from pharmacy company right now. I, I requested additional revenue account, be built convenience to capture the profit that the pharmacy's making. So when we receive those checks, part will go back to prescription drugs and part will go back into a revenue account, so we can actually track that, have that separated. And that hasn't been completed yet.
So is everybody just wanting to move forward with the same account, just changing the name to Pharmacy? I, I think it's important, John, to keep the Employee Benefits General Fund account separate from this. Whenever, when I was saying combined, I meant the department, the other piece of it. Because eventually, the, the goal would be, I think, all of our goal around here was at some point for it to kinda be like planning used to be. You know, where it was generating enough income that it was sufficient, didn't need a general fund allocation, you know, in certain years. And if we have the pharmacy separate budget like this, if we get to a point where our pharmacy's doing enough business and we're paying everybody and doing all of that out of that other account, we may not need to infuse general fund dollars in the future right now. Still in its infancy stages, so we're, we're gonna need to do that. But I think having a separate account is good, because just like planning, we were able to, or should say, they were able to operate for a long time, mostly out of that. But then the fees dwindled, we had COVID and, you know, building applications went down. So then they needed more allocations from the general fund. But we already had the account there to where we could just start putting them in there. So if we keep this, we just name it Pharmacy, it gives us flexibility in the future. We do need to make some changes, makes sense. Welcome back. Christie, is that just a?
A name change?
Name change, is there anything?
There's several places to do it, both on our side. Why not?
But we should probably have the estimate of needs updated with Pharmacy at the top instead of Social Services.
We'll do, so, so I'll revise and send it a new estimate of needs to put those computers, change the name.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and receive this so that we can discuss it under the general item of ones that we've already received. But change the name, it sounds like everybody wants name change at your computers. And I would recommend taking the, um, the senior centers, um, item out and then get with whoever you need to get with, assuming it would be Jessica on the, the other, the general government, general fund, general government, and have that one sixty-three happen to that estimate of needs. So. Is everybody cool with that? If so, is there a motion to receive the twenty-five, twenty-six general fund estimate of needs for Employee Benefits? I'm sorry, for Social Services to be renamed Pharmacy? Got a motion, do we have a second? We got a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thanks, John. Alright, Amy? Oh, did you have something else?
This was done weeks ago, so obviously it's way out of date with, with, with what's happened current, because those numbers will have to be adjusted. So I'd really like to bring that back to where we're at now and re, reduce the projections on it. Um, the only really fixed costs, and I talked about fixed costs, are things that we pay vendors for. Like changes, I know I wouldn't take it, it's not reflected on, on the current budget. But our, our Medicare group advantage plan is going up, um, to about three hundred and thirty thousand a year, uh, which is a pretty low increase compared to the market, which I found out most are shooting a thousand percent increase on those. Cause the government's paying us the cost. Um, if, if you remember on the retirees, we switched them over, we were paying about two point five million dollars for the prescriptions. We were paying one point three million for their Medicare plan. And so that's three, about three point two million, yeah, three point two million before we made that change. And we reduced it to one point six million. But that looks like it's gonna go up at least three hundred thousand. Um. I was able to reduce the stop loss, um, and negotiate with stop loss on our renewal with them through EMR. Um, and, and shave about a hundred billion thousand off the stop loss price. So that will help offset that. Most carriers came in with five hundred thousand dollar increases on our stop loss. That will negotiate that down based on our current claims, we'll be back.
No lasers or anything?
Cleanest renewal, yeah. So, so, you know, one carrier was willing to negotiate, but all the other ones were about five hundred thousand increases for paying down. So actually got that reduced all the way down to saving about. So that'll offset that advantage increase that we're getting. But I'll, I need to bring back a budget based on current years, cause it's changed. And I'm a comfortable presentation, the one that was submitted, because that was based on numbers before our claim started projecting. It's not accurate.
Okay, is tomorrow's item, it's just general like today, is right? Okay, so. You're gonna have to receive those others, cause we don't have name departments on, so.
Okay, so bring it back tomorrow?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll bring that back tomorrow. And then one, one thing to note out on Employee Benefits, as a reminder, last year the board voted to increase the employer premiums three percent, employee premiums three percent, and those were used to calculate the budget. And that really hasn't been addressed this year as of yet. So I, I need direction to include a three percent increase in revenue on the employer premiums and the employee retiree premiums, if you wanna follow what you did last year. So we can include that in revenue in the projection and to complete the budget.
So. Cause we did, with the September supplement, we did the three percent. So that should be in there, are you asking for another three percent?
Yeah, cause every year rates change typically, so.
Would we not address that when you have the rates or? Is this the time of year we look at that?
No, yeah, the report's done in July, but from my recula, last year, um, it was gonna be, what I thought, I might misunderstood it. But we were going towards a three percent, uh, overall every year. Um, I might be wrong on that, but that's what I remember.
I know we talked about stepping it up and not putting a line for many years and be faced with a bigger, but I don't remember saying three percent.
That's what they apply to last year overall, employee retiree rates and then employer rates, they just, just imposed a three percent outside of what the actuary rule recommendation was.
So it sounds like we'll tackle that in September.
Yeah, that's something that we.
We'll have a revised, we'll probably.
We'll have actuary report, so, so that, that will impact in the budget I do today. Uh, it'll, it'll require more returns for dollars, so it won't be, you'll just have to know that that could be addressed later.
What you do today is a snapshot, it's like everyone else's. I mean, it should get you, this should get employee's benefits through the first three or four months.
Yeah.
And then you can shore everything up.
If you're comfortable with that, I just wanted to bring that up, that's what we did last year, now it's used to kinda calculate the revenue for the budget, the expenses.
Can I ask you one question on your employer premiums line?
Sure.
Um, twenty-four, twenty-five budget showing eighteen point three.
Go ahead, Christie.
So the eighteen point three, employer premiums, twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Albert, can you increase that size a little bit, please?
That? Let me see if I can say this right.
Is that better, one more?
I think that's a difference of three percent that I would, um, on that projection. It was kinda based on, when I did the projection, I looked at what we budgeted, it would go up. And I can bring that back if I answer back to you, Christie, but.
Yeah, but on your budget, I was thinking we had, you know, what we sucked out of everyone's budgets. And so general fund, it was about eleven something. And then you had about eleven, and you had about four million with CJA, that's fifteen. Where's that other three million coming from?
I'll bring back.
Cash accounts?
General fund, I mean, sorry, special revenue stays into it. So we have three, three different sources, you know, general fund, jail premiums, and then, um, special revenue.
Okay, so where on your twenty-four, twenty-five budget then are the cash transfers?
Those aren't, those usually are reflected, so the transfer for the retirees.
No, the, the cash. No, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Where is your cash transfers? That's under beginning fund balance, that's them off the line. You'd, I don't see where your budgeted cash transfers are.
So the, the actual transfers that are contained right here, that eight point six, that's the number.
I know, but in your budget, we budgeted seven something to start July one, and then it got to the eight six ninety-six with September supplement. Where is that in your twenty-four, twenty-five budget? Like July one, you did cash transfers.
You took all the estimates in need form, I don't think it's ever included on there. Is that what you mean by on the estimates in need?
Well, this is a projection, I mean, it should have had that in there.
Yeah, I, I saw it. Yeah, that I remember.
The, the transfer amounts there.
Yeah, is that what you're asking, Christie? Uh, uh, you're saying that you'd like to see it reflected on the, the actual estimates in need form?
I would think it would, if it, if you're sitting in February and you're saying this is our budget, our current budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, wouldn't that be in there? And we, we moved seven million plus.
Well, I mean.
We moved this, this.
I wouldn't think so, because I mean, I mean, the estimates in need isn't, isn't a revenue. It's a.
Revenue, transfers, and fund balance.
Exactly. Yeah, but like, for example, I mean, you don't have three million dollars of the estimates in need, though, because that's a revenue sheet, not a expenditure sheet, right?
The top is expenditures, bottom's revenue.
And all those cash transfers are contained within that, transfers in.
I know that, I understand, but your twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I don't know, what is it ten five? It says beginning fund balance. It's on the transfer. Oh, I see it, my bad, transfers in line, it's a little. And where did we get ten five?
I think that was.
Because it was.
That was the original projection. September's a total of changes.
And adjusted September down to one six.
Sorry, I was looking at the wrong line.
So you're looking at the year, I'm still super confused. So you were looking at the year today, budget report on the estimates?
I'm looking at the column that's I'm looking at forty-ten.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about. And it's, it's not a real estimate, I mean, it's, it's a worksheet.
Okay, I don't have that in my book.
It's other analysis, one of the back tabs. This is forty-ten. The ten was the request, it wasn't.
She didn't have it in November, so that's kind of probably that difference there. That three percent, it wasn't done, budget season was done in September, and then went through back to seven one for the employees.
That's how we got from eighteen-three to twenty-four seven. Yeah, and that ten-five fifty-four, I think should be the eight million six ninety-six, seven seventy-five.
Right.
Okay.
So I'll bring this one back tomorrow. On the medical and prescription, I just want the same thing we did this year, a two percent on medical claims and four percent on prescription. That's pretty low estimate. That's what I did.
All right, thanks, Jordan.
Thank you.
All right, these facilities, who's doing facilities? That's where I saw.
Today, I'm going to talk about three of our, three of our facilities, two eighty.
Hang on one second, hang on, hang on, hang on. Everybody's there, everybody there?
Everything we did this year, we're trying to emulate next year. We have just a few exact, on two eighty. We had we had a benefit shortfall, and we were getting that money back, so if you look at the total, you'll see six thousand three hundred sixty over, which changes the numbers a bit. That's, that's money coming back, that's the only difference, and two eighty.
Chris, where is that money coming from?
I think, I'm not going to help you, because we helped September something, some, something, a shortfall.
He was saying, he's saying he had a benefit shortfall, but getting money down. Where is that money coming from?
So he's just saying in his amended budget, there's a negative amount there in order to portray in the request proposed budget that in dollar amount different is in those, the calculation for those. Right. It's like the return is in.
Yeah, which is what we do.
Does that make sense? So the calculation, the calculation of the number, calculation of all these numbers is sixty-three hundred dollars greater than the previous year, and it's just due to the percentages, so the calculation from last year missed sixty-three hundred dollars. And so it was just a calculation error, correct?
Is this the same issue that M I S had also in other departments?
Yes.
Okay.
It's based off of, if I understand, and Albert did a lot of these calculations, but based off of whenever a flat budget was determined last year, whatever those estimated needs were as outlined for the number of employees or the dollar amounts, how that was carried over into calculating in September supplement. So there's just a carryover of detail in how it may transfer into the actual stuff here. So we're, we met with each department just to make sure what they've put in this year is exactly what they need for their year and.
And we, we've had this issue in the past. So the changes that you've made, this should be the last time that we have this. Moving forward, we shouldn't have these kinds of issues in future fiscal years.
Unless you have a retroactive COLA that affects the budget like we had last year. Recall that there was additional funding put in that I think was made available at the end of the calendar year, am I correct?
I'm checking about the COLA and the related benefit.
We had not anticipated that at that time.
Okay. That doesn't, that's not what I'm talking about here, though. Because that, when we do the COLA, say it's a five thousand dollar salary equal portion, we should be, when we're calculating that COLA, we should be calculating the exact FICA and benefit amount that associates with that five thousand. So that should be added in on the benefit side, so we shouldn't have these red numbers moving forward if we're doing actual calculations and not percentages, because that's what we were doing in the past, was just a blanket percentage and it didn't always match up. Is that correct?
Correct. I need to add to that, when approving a flat budget, to take into consideration I'm not, from what I understand, the carryover of a couple of years regarding the detail. So where the money goes in the budget, salary, benefits, if there was a request to shore something up, but was awarded a flat budget, then that wasn't realized, meaning it's in the budget. So the conversation we're having is we're going to shore everything up through estimated needs, and we will see the correction here. But when discussions of approving the flat budget, what does that mean to make sure our work on showing things up carries over to? So that's a little bit of the discussion that we had, just to make sure.
And this whole, if, am I, am I correct to say that this issue involved a twenty-two, twenty-three problem? Or was it last year's problem?
A combination.
Yes.
Okay.
From, from the investment, from our work looking into it, it looks like we had a couple of carryovers of carrying over the flat budget a couple of years and a couple of requests that departments thought they maybe had been awarded weren't. So a lot of departments are basically borrowing from their capital and M O to make up some of the salary requests that they did not receive and which finds us into this year, trying to just make sure our dollars all match up with, whether it's a COLA related or an increase somebody received, and reflecting that accurately on this year's estimate.
Okay, and so the F Y twenty-six estimates, you're pretty, you're confident that this is fixed?
This will be your twenty-six, which will be upcoming.
Yeah.
I have, I think I met with every department, just to reiterate, to check salaring benefits, to ensure elected official pay, chief deputy, the benefits associated are all calculated correctly so that it is a hundred percent accurate what is being presented to us this year.
Some changes changed.
You're talking about the team of supplement thing?
Uh, no, any kind of change within the department that would affect salaries and benefits.
Sure, and then usually that's all, it's very difficult to process. To get everybody started off July one with the current established numbers. Did I say that okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and there's, when you add COLAs or you add whatever, you're going to have increases or decreases. The issue that we've had is you have this red number that nobody knows what it's associated with, not a, oh, there's an increase from last fiscal year because of COLA that was added. That, that's fine, it's this other trying to track down, well, this is showing that I'm getting thirty thousand less or thirty thousand more. It doesn't make sense because we're actually putting the same in the same accounts that we were the year before. That's what we're trying to fix here. So, okay.
That's it on, on two eighty.
Let me ask you one more question, go back to, we've got a fourth call this fiscal, we need to, are you going to make it?
Yes.
Be a little.
Okay, okay, that's what I was saying, where are you going to get?
Actually, we're on the same. We got a line, we're, we're understanding, we can transfer this. Short fall, we did that before.
Okay, that was, where are you going to, okay, all good.
All right, Chris.
Okay, um, next is three and five, custodial. Once again, everything is flat, but I think for ten percent on supplies. Mostly paper goods, that's always, that's always an increase, ten percent really consistent. That would be the only change with shift that budget.
There's one year left on the janitorial contract at the current pricing. Next year, I'm sure we'll suffer some increase in contractual framework.
Well, this is showing a increase in service contract and building and grounds maintenance.
That's twenty-nine one.
Ten percent.
In addition to the janitorial supplies, which was the ten percent.
Yeah, thirty-six, so you went at ten percent on all of it.
Yeah. Okay, I understood you saying just on the supplies, that it's ten percent on all of them. Is the contract going up ten percent?
No. No. The amount of extra work that we do, that is practically like extra cleaning when new elected officials come in or cleaning after special events, or when we have spills and those kinds of things, that's where that would be accounted for.
But that was accounted for this fiscal year at the fifty-six thousand. Next fiscal year, are you anticipating ten percent more spills and ten percent more?
When it comes to support for the contracts and the contractors' work that we have going on here, like we were asked, for example, to have what was D A Civil, deep clean on the fifth floor. Those offices are vacant, but the court clerk expects to occupy those and use them, and we were asked to clean them. So that entire suite of offices was deep cleaned, topped off for their intended use, and they've not occupied them yet, but.
Would that not be the?
That's something they would do contractually?
Well, no, I was thinking that would be something that would be on the project cost.
No, no. The project didn't include D A Civil at all. Uh, there was nothing done in the D A Civil space. And so all of those offices, as a result of work taking place in the lobby and out, excuse me, out on the fifth floor, it gets dusty, things happen, there's, there's stuff that just accumulates. So windows certainly on the inside, flooring, baseboards, crown mold throughout the office suites. That's just one example.
Yeah, that is just one example. And every project we have to support, we have to support project on, project on one. But yeah, we have to offer support on every project that goes on, and there's a lot of projects going on.
Once the third floor courtroom, which by the way has come along really well, we hit a home run, Chris hit a home run with the contractor team at work. Uh, once that flooring, painting, cabinetry is all installed and done, we'll have to do a deep thorough cleaning in that space too. So there's.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, I would think that cleaning costs associated with projects would be included in project expenses, because.
Well, things, things happen that are not expected, such as the first floor, we have this, an asbestos issue that has come up that nobody's expected that we're going to have to support, so things happen.
But that's not custodial related, I'm talking about on the custodial.
Yeah, well, I'm just giving an example of that.
I get that, I get that, you guys have tons of contract targets, I get that. But I'm saying, we know that a project, when it's completed, is going to have to be cleaned and, and all of that. I just would think that we would include that, because if we don't, and we're paying custodial through a contract, and we don't have money set aside in that contract encumbered to pay for that stuff, we could wind up getting into some issues.
This is the right thing to do, to go behind a contract. We've done this quite a while now and know.
That's fine, I'm just saying, include those expenses for you going behind into the project costs. That's all I'm saying, I think that would probably be helpful.
What's the annual base contract now?
It's worth finished base, I can't remember what that number is. And we do this for a number of years, three years. And I was happy to know that U B M, our current contract, is holding line and will continue to do the work at the contracted amount. I know they're having some employee issues. You know, they typically come in at night and do their work, and so they're always turned over and within that community, there's a level of nervousness for whatever reason, and so I don't know that employees are anymore difficult to come up with or not, but they seem to begin to drop down.
Can we get that base contract now? We don't have it now.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the custodial?
And on my capital.
Just a second.
Where is the capital one in here? Everybody have it?
Yes.
Sorry, it took me a minute. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, um, capital's bringing straightforward, once again, the same flat. Courthouse carpet, annex carpet, insurance is unallocated. Pretty straightforward. Pretty straightforward. I think that's a thousand dollars. Yes.
I'm a little worried about that number. You know, we typically don't get our insurance premium costs. Uh, until after the beginning of the fiscal year. And given the number of insurance claims types industry wide, I'd certainly expect their premiums to go up. I don't know if they would change their deductible as well. They've done this one other time. We used to enjoy a fifty thousand dollar deductible. That was raised to a hundred thousand dollars four or five years ago maybe. I don't know if that will be sufficient moving forward. Uh, Karen Kent is dealing with their insurance carrier and trying to get the others for it, so.
Yeah, I think that's that's something we'll have to take up in September, probably. Usually those insurance premiums, we don't have those numbers in in time. So we need to check and see. I think the deductible is still fifty thousand per turn.
It's always a hundred thousand. Well, for the past three or four years, it's been a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that changed with Dan Matthews. And so we put that in here as a line item to be cognizant of what that number is. And and what we'll have to come up with in the event of a of a claim that exceeds that.
Yeah, I thought we had that in there for two claims a year, fifty thousand or two, because I know when we did those elevators down there, it was fifty thousand, but okay.
That's long ago. Now it's a hundred thousand dollar deductible as of today, and I would almost expect that.
One question on the al- unallocated capital. That's what we also we could choose the as needed.
That's.
Yeah, that's the the infrastructure committee's. Ash, pardon.
Right. But we usually have, so in the capital projects, there's usually as needed and unallocated capital. There's kind of two little small pots.
Yeah, I think that as.
Close out a project, it comes down, and the as needed, we funded it three hundred thousand.
Yeah, the as needed is for the infrastructure. I think the unallocated is the monies that were put in there for projects. But weren't needed for the project. I think that's the delineation between those two.
Did we normally on the as needed, sometimes just supplement to get it back to the three hundred?
Yeah, we have done that.
Do y'all know what your balance is right now? That as needed?
Don't have that number.
Joe, do you know how much you guys have in there? Okay. When I quit sitting regularly, I. Yeah, is maybe Jessica's around. I would think she would be tracking this. I'm sorry.
You know, we could always tackle this on our recommendation side. I mean, this is their estimate needs.
Mm hmm. Yeah, okay.
Let's do that. Never mind, Albert.
We will need to address that, but yeah. All right, is there any questions for facilities on either of these three estimated needs? If not, do we have a motion to receive the facility's estimated needs as presented?
Shalom.
Got a motion received. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Ayes, have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Key. Albert, since you're gonna be in here with us, right, I'm gonna go ahead and skip you for now. If that's all right. How's everybody doing? What's that? I'm gonna go to. Sure. Grant, what we're what we've been trying to focus on are increases and decreases. Not necessarily every single line item today, and then anything else that you think is pressing that needs to be brought to our attention. Ready? Everybody ready?
Yeah.
It's pretty far back, close to the, it's about that far away from. Which dark blue is this? Looks hard to public defender. If you get to too dark a blue, you've gone too far. Do you guys have these sheets?
I did it yet.
I looked at it and it's striped like one or two others, and I'll just take a little pad so it sticks up.
We've got some keys down here if you need some.
I can color code it so it matches the index. I'm gonna be bougie. Laminate. Shut up. Just gave me PTSD.
So Grant, you're asking for two new positions?
So, yeah, so let me just, yeah. So as far as finishing the year, we had that meeting last week, so we're all, that's been hashed out, so so we're good there. Um, so yeah, that was one of them. Two positions, family engagement coordinator, custodian. It'll be a sixty five thirty five split between detention bureau. Um, to the best of my knowledge, it's been a few years, several years since juvenile requested positions. Um, so this year requesting uh two, those two positions.
How many custodians do you currently have?
Uh, we currently have four. Um, with the potential addition of new courtrooms especially, we're strapped on custodians right now. And we're experiencing the same issues in the community as Keith has kind of touched on. It's been experiencing a lot, a high turnover in this past fiscal year. At one point, we were down to one janitor and Deputy Director Brown and I pulled trash for some weeks. Um, it's been difficult to retain that staff. Um, and so that's something that, and we haven't asked for positions in a couple of years, but that's one area that I'm really struggling in. It's just that we all, um, and if we're gonna add courtrooms to the building, it will absolutely ground me when it comes to this. So that's one of the reasons why we offer that position. Um, the other position is for uh a family coordinator. We've had so many implementations and different things that we're doing to help the population. That we're seeing a significant decrease in when the kids are actually transitioning to go home. Making sure those services are continued, making sure they're plugged in with their workers, the kids that we're releasing on ankle monitors. Scheduling visitation for the kids that are in, we're seeing a heavy workload increase there. Uh, we haven't had a new position in detention in a couple of years, um, or in Europe. Um, and so that's a piece that would really help us with kind of coordinating everything together. So that's why we have to.
So for the custodians, you say you have four positions. Are they all filled right now?
Uh, as of yesterday, yes. Um, but we uh we've had two for probably the past three months. We brought somebody, uh, we've actually transitioned someone from detention over about a month ago. And then we filled the last one yesterday, so we are full today.
Any other questions on the positions? Good? Yeah, on that part. Okay, so moving on to um your worksheet, you'll see there's obviously a large bump in the amount requested. Um, for M and O, and I'll just tell you, seventy five thousand of that is between utilities and food. So those are the costs that we've been talking about and discussing. Um, so that's that's what's raised there, but other stuff, um, that's kind of we heard from Key too. Janitorial supplies, uh, uniforms, um, with the hiring of people pretty consistently, new uniforms. Um, and also you'll see down at the bottom, uh, professional services. So our uh turnkey ARPA contract will end December fifteenth. And Hannah Bruce can probably talk to this way better than me, but from what I understand, it's an awesome program. Everything's working great, um, and the kids are used to it. They like it. It's something they want to continue doing. So we're asking obviously to be budgeted through the rest of the fiscal year, for those last six and a half months of that contract. Now, I know they're gonna negotiate maybe a change in services, maybe more, maybe less, um, in a new contract. So that total could possibly change for the better for us, but that's where it sits sits right now.
So that's our behavior management.
And if you would go up here.
Uh, that's our uh behavior management contract that we're utilizing to do medication evaluations and psychological services for the kids.
Which one are we talking about?
Uh, that's the the raise in professional services other. Um, that's where there's a small increase in there for GPS monitoring. Um, the rest is turnkey. Um, our contract, we're, we have enough money in our ARPA budget to finish out through December, so we need another half of the year for that. Um, the GPS monitoring increase is much smaller, um, but that we've had a hundred and eighty kids on GPS over the past year roughly. Um, and so that it costs us three dollars a day versus the over three hundred dollars a day it takes to house them. So, um, I see that as a huge financial benefit to us, but, um, the turnkey contract especially is, I'll be very honest with you, is how we're managing behavior. Um, we have the largest population of offenders in the state. Um, we have a higher population than the state facility. We have a higher population than any of the other facilities. I greatly believe our success in that is because of this turnkey contract. Um, we're able to get them evaluated for behavioral meds. We have kids who come in who suffer severe mental health, severe autism, severe, just tons of different challenges. That a lot of times they can't get evaluated anywhere else, or they're detoxing off of something, or they haven't been on their meds for weeks. And so we're able to get them evaluated and get their medication in-house to help with behavior. Um, it has been an absolute game changer for us, and I don't say that lightly. Um, we are trying, attempting to co- to negotiate with turnkey to reduce some of the services to try and have a better fiscal impact. So it doesn't cost us quite as much. Um, but we run the struggle of if we go down too much on services, then it doesn't really benefit turnkey to have the contract. And we have to have those vital, especially medication services. So we're talking with um with Danny and with the turnkey team to see where we can come to a to an agreement with. But um that would be to continue our current contract through the end of this week.
So services other includes GPS monitor?
The professional services other, yes. That's also GPS.
What is the services other?
That's all.
Just all of it together. It's just the line item, all of it.
So Hannah, back on the professional services other.
Yes.
You have eighteen, eighteen, nine fifty two. Is that GPS this year?
Looking this.
Your budget this year. So this is where I'm going. So if ARPA, I'm assuming this behavior management contract, is that new? With ARPA and Netflix running out?
Paid out of ARPA right now. We'd like to.
So can I?
How long is it being paid for out of ARPA?
Through December, so it's only half a year.
We're December twenty sixth.
But our money ends in December of twenty five. My funding ends in December of twenty five.
I thought we we structured it to where it went through the end of the ARPA period.
Correct. When we started the turnkey, which it started before me, but when we started those negotiations, they weren't sure what kind of services they would want. So they did an estimate with turnkey of the amount. And then, once it was time to execute the contract, it only put us through December of twenty five.
So the cost of services were higher.
Than the estimation.
Than the estimation. So instead of reducing the services to extend through the full period. You reduce the period and increase the service.
They did.
Awesome. Just. No one notified P and G that this had occurred, I guess.
It was, it wasn't me. I don't, I'm not sure when.
No, I'm not. So. Okay. Was that a, was that a DA's office thing saying, oh, you can only do the contract through the end of the?
No, it's it's purely funding. Our funding runs out in December.
So you presented the project.
Correct, and it was funded at the same amount. And then we negotiated with turnkey and that only got us.
And then outside of P and G and the board, what we thought we were doing, we did something different.
I believe so. I also thought we were going through twenty six. And then when we looked at everything, the estimate of needs, Grant and Bruce, that were turnkey and confirmed with them, our funding only gets us through this December. I also thought we were through twenty six, but didn't realize that our funding wasn't.
So Joe.
I was just gonna say, so the scope changed.
I believe when they initially quoted it, they said, here's the amount that we think we might need. And then when the actual contract came down, turnkey said, well, here's what we can do and here's the amount. Can you guys do this? And we said, sure, sounds great. And then I don't think we realized that it didn't go through twenty six. That's my guess. I wasn't a part of that, but that's my guess. It's that we thought it was going through twenty six.
The contract worked out through B O C C, though, right?
Yeah, the contract went, yeah.
Do you, do you think, is there gonna be any, and I know this might be too hard for you to determine that. Since this is an open ARPA project, if there's ARPA dollars that roll back from other projects that aren't needed and expended. They could be shifted over to this. I say could be.
We asked that. Um, we asked that before we submitted this, and we were told that there is no additional.
You were told no?
By Daniel.
Daniel doesn't make that.
Sure, sure. But she said that there, because we asked like, are there other mental health like funds that, you know, maybe didn't expend all of their dollars? That could be reverted, we, and we were told that that wouldn't be possible.
Maybe not at the moment. We don't, once it's actually rolled back, we don't know. I think we're probably more anticipating, you know, rollback monies to go to elevators and things like that. But I would say potentially, yeah. And I wonder about like some of the opioid abatement dollars and.
There are still opioid abatement dollars available right now through Juul.
Well, did you say that on anything? You had the opioid and then you had the Juul. They were separate. And the Juul was, the Juul was.
Or. Yes, we could use that on anything except law. And that's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so there's potential there to, the opioids, much more of a trick.
Mm hmm. Yeah. You know what the actual intended increase was for the total? So it's, it doesn't look like the.
It's not adding it.
Yeah, salaries and carryovers, that'd be fifty seven, and of course, those professional services that are carried over.
We located that, that it looked like there may have been a formula or something that might be off.
Yeah, because it looks, just looking at your proposed budget versus the amended, if those all add up correctly. It's a.
Mm hmm.
Two hundred and eighty four thousand dollar increase, whereas it says it's an eighty six thousand dollar.
Right, yeah, I think we plugged the formula somewhere.
I got. Well, and I I think if you look at that professional services other and services other, those are increases. And there's nothing in that difference column. So fixing that may fix the whole thing. And there's nothing in that difference column. So fixing that may fix the whole thing. Yep. Yep. Salaries did the same thing.
Sorry, Albert's worked great with us. I feel like we just miss buttons sometimes.
Well, but those are, those are formulas that should be automatically updated by, by the form itself. You just might have some dead links or something.
Um, the other piece on our detention, uh, specifically, MIS has told us we have forty computers that are being actively used by full-time employees that are no longer going to be serviced in August. Um, forty computers is about fifty-two thousand dollars on this particular budget. So that's a big piece that we just found out about. So, um, that's another piece of the increase.
So the computers, the whole forty-eight thousand.
Uh, that's for the detention side. Yeah. And then there'll be some on Bureau also. Is that?
Is all forty in the, is all forty both Bureau and detention?
Forty total with twenty-six going to detention.
Okay, thanks.
So we got this information from MIS, quote, roughly what computers are being sold for now, which is how we came up with this.
Yeah, we had to go through that too.
Oh, yeah.
Not on that scale though. I guess we're on a whole operating system that they say in the fall will completely stop being, they won't be.
So is, is that cost hardware and software, or is that just hardware?
We got it from MIS, but I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I'll.
Well, we use the Microsoft three sixty-seven. That license shouldn't. The software is web-based, at least ours is. So that shouldn't be a change, but I'll confirm.
Yeah. You guys are on the three sixty-five.
Yeah.
Hannah, back on your professional services other.
Yeah.
An increase of one-hundred-and-eleven-thousand forty-eight dollars. How much of that is the contract, the turnkey contract? How much is that?
And how do yours is?
Uh, eighty.
Turnkey's eighty?
Yeah.
And the rest is GPS?
Yes.
Yeah, is that, I mean, with your new crazy numbers for population, is nine thousand bucks enough for food, for sure?
How we're estimated right now, I think so. Um, with the, assuming that, I know you guys gave me the seventy-five out of continuing, so assuming that that, that's added in here, I think we'll be fine. Um, it'll depend on if utilities stay in my budget, we'll be fine. Because then if we have a low monthly utilities, I can use that for food. If utilities get removed from my budget, we'll have to look at that number and see what it looks like. But we estimate by the week on food, so that should give us plenty.
So that one-eighty-five for this year's amended budget includes the seventy-five that was given to you? And that, that was my concern because I, I had thought that, because if there was one-eighty-five plus the seventy-five, you see what I'm saying? It seems like we'd be going backwards on food. That makes sense what I'm asking.
The question.
Well, like, so how, how much was your total budget for, how much, do you know what your total line item for food was, including the money that was just recently given to you? Because that was given after the, this was probably submitted. So my concern was is that with your new hire, kids that seem to be having, it probably doesn't work like this at the point where backwards.
Right, this line item for food, this is the total that we need.
Yeah, that's.
So the nine thousand additional is all we should need in addition to food.
From talk to the kitchen.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. But yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, because again, just because the timing was weird on this mission of this versus.
All right. I, I just, not to, not to pick on you guys, I just had this thought right now while you guys were presenting. And this is, I, I think everybody that's received ARPA money for projects, that was one of the concerns going in, was that we were using a one-time grant source to do some things. And the reason why we kind of prioritized one-time items was because you didn't have ongoing issues. If we use that money for services that are wanting, wanted to continue long-term, and we didn't have the money to fund those before, and we're using those, in this instance, eighty thousand dollars for turnkey, we need to be thinking creatively about how we can, if we're wanting to continue those services, how are we going to continue those services without putting undue pressure on a general fund budget that is so tight? Hey, and that's your, your group wasn't the only one. I'm sure that.
Yes.
Got, um, money for those types of projects, but that's something that we really need to, to consider coming up on twenty-six. Yours, because of the change in the scope and all that, kind of coming to your attention now and to our attention now, we may wind up this time next year, getting other folks coming in and saying, hey, we got this great project that ARPA did, and we need an additional two-hundred-thousand dollars a year to continue this project. Well, no. We, I know whenever I sat and when Joe sat, and he did as well, you know, articulated that, hey, this is, you know, I think this is a, a great worthwhile project. Get it started here, but we need you to be focused on finding other grant opportunities or whatever to continue it beyond the ARPA side.
Right. And we are, we are looking through that. We're meeting with Arnold. We're meeting with several different private organizations to see about their willingness to continue. Um, I didn't want to not put it on our estimate so that you guys could know about it.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we realized these impacts that it would be. Um, I think when we started this project specifically, I mean, I can't say to their intent, but I know that my understanding of it was that it would be tellamental how the kid was having a crisis. But again, we're post-COVID. It was hard to get people into the facility. I don't think we realized the impact that the medication evaluation process would have on behavior. Um, especially with the population, our, I mean, we were at seventy-five one day last week. Um, whereas before, our population was routinely in the fifties, sixties, now averages sixties, seventies. I don't think any of us realized the impacts that it would have.
So Hannah, this is, I'm, I'm just trying to find the contract. So the original amount was three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. Is that right?
Sounds.
I believe so.
Sounds right.
ARPA. So year one was a hundred-and-thirty-two, one fifty-five, year two, one thirty-seven, four forty-one, twenty. And then the final seven months was eighty-three thousand, three eighty-one. Okay. It, and what I'm looking at, and this might not be right, but it, it talks about servicing up to seventy-four kids. So that would be inclusive of your high, your hiring numbers. Sixteen hours a week of individual counseling services. And four, two hours a week of psych- psychiatric evaluation and treatment. So you, you were talking about this medication. That falls within the scope of this contract?
Yes. Yes. And we have worked with turnkey to, um, like if we, if there's a week that we don't need as many individual counseling hours, but we had a kid who needed an extra medication evaluation, they've allowed us to do that within the contract.
I'm, I'm just in my own head, trying to figure out how we got so far outside of, of a, a contract that we entered, unless there's, there's something that's gone across.
What do you mean?
A revision or something. How we up those numbers because the contract's specific in what we're paying.
And we pay them monthly. Uh, if they, it's a, it's a monthly rate that we pay them.
Right. And then in that contract specifically, in, in that it outlines the monthly cost that we pay. So are we paying in excess now of what?
No, I don't believe we're paying in excess at all. If, if turnkey's willing to give us more psychiatric and less individual counseling for a week because we needed that heavier, that's been an, an agreement that they've allowed us to do because every week won't look the same.
I think Joe was saying we've either exceeded the contract amount, or we didn't budget correctly for it or something. To meet what the contract permits.
Is turnkey doing more than the contract, which originally submitted for?
No.
Do you see the issue that he's talking about?
Yeah.
So if, if turnkey is doing the exact same thing they were doing before.
But we had the same monthly payment, so that shouldn't have changed. The, the payments aren't fluctuating.
They, they change slightly each year.
Right.
The amount per month. But from what we all looked at is it totals when you make that last payment, that that would be the last penny of whatever was funded in the, the ARPA money.
Joe, how do those contracts for our work versus for like professional service like that? Are they, so let, so let's say the date it was approved was January first of two thousand and three.
Yeah, it looks like.
Would the contract be from January first of two thousand and three to January, to December of twenty-six?
We had anticipated, um, help me out, because I think you're the only one that was setting some at P and G. When we entered into these types of contracts, we anticipated that the month that it would start was when it was enacted by both parties and would run through twelve, thirty-one, and twenty-six. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So in this case, we were looking at thirty-one months of service per the contract.
So, so you know that.
Started, Brandon, I think it was May of twenty-three.
Okay. Yeah. So I am a little bit confused. And so turnkey's providing exactly what they contracted, so they were going to do. How did we get short on money?
I don't think, I don't think.
What you say.
So the, unless I'm, this is something, it, it started what, May fifteenth, I think.
Of twenty-three, but he said.
Submitted in at the end, December fifteenth of twenty-five.
Does, does the contract end December fifteenth, twenty-five from there?
See, yeah. So, so based on the number.
Okay. So we didn't, we, we didn't run it out through the thirty-one of twenty-six.
In the beginning, we were.
So we've had this.
So Joe, in the beginning, we weren't running the contracts out through the end of twenty-six.
Correct.
But we were funding, so we were setting aside sufficient funding to run through the end of twenty-six.
Yep.
And then we were doing annual contracts. And then Danielle came in and said, well, you actually have to encumber all of that. So we need to redo contracts to run through the end of the month.
Run through the middle of December of twenty-five.
So it makes sense.
Yeah. You said, yeah, thirty-one months, five of twenty-three would be that. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So there's, there's not an issue of overspending. That's gross.
We've given the same amount.
We're within the amount.
Yes. We just didn't put it out as long as, which at the time, remember, we couldn't go through twenty-six. It wasn't until they did something later to allow us to extend it.
We couldn't do the contract.
Right.
But we were setting sufficient funds aside. And it sounds like what had happened was we had set sufficient funds aside to go through the end of twenty-six. But through the negotiation, negotiated services, the juvenile was going to get, you guys wanted more services on a shorter.
Initial.
Period. And I don't, I just, I don't know that BOCC was aware of that. But.
All right. Now, now it fixes, because I thought I heard one of you say that turnkey was providing more services than initially contemplated and that it would random.
No, I think just in the beginning, when we said we need X amount for the project of our original submission, we didn't know the specifics of how much that would cost. We just knew, once it was awarded, you have this amount of money, and then we build a contract from that.
What amount are you paying, right, ARPA funds? How much do they pay you to this?
Our monthly turnkey contract.
Right, right now, we'll pay them. I think it's at eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
It's eleven.
It's either eleven, four fifty-three, forty-three, or eleven, nine, eleven.
We should be at that. We should be.
Nine hundred.
It's just under.
Because we're in those last, we should be at those last seven months. We're close to it. Okay.
So we've got six and a half months to go for eighty thousand dollars. That's coming up to twelve thousand, three oh seven.
No, we pay eleven thousand now.
Right.
A month.
Right. You told me that of the increase, it's eighty thousand for turnkey. And I divided that by six and a half months.
Yeah, so calculating it, calculating it at about twelve thousand a month.
It's coming out. Okay. Twelve thousand, three hundred and seven.
For six, six and a half months. It comes up to what, seventy-eight thousand, maybe? Something like that.
I mean, round.
Right. And when we renegotiate, it could be more. Let's, it's, that, that's where that number. Let's do this. We have the estimate of needs. We know that you're wanting to continue on. We can receive the estimate of needs, but if, if BOCC would take a look and see on Juul or other to be able to fill this gap, and then that gives you a little bit more time, because we have grant funding right now. If we use other grant litigation funding while we're seeking out other grant funding, I think that might.
Right now, you're looking at one-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars.
Now, part of that's GPS.
Part of it's GPS. That's what I was trying, I was trying to nail.
Eighty for turnkey, another thirty-one revenue for GPS.
Right.
Okay.
Which that GPS, it looks like it's about forty percent more.
Yeah. It's, when I was looking at some of the old bills, what we were paying compared to what we're paying now, it's, it's increased by.
Because we started on trial. We only had a couple of kids on it for the first several months. So now.
You guys are charging individuals who are on GPS and you're receiving revenue back in the, for that? There's no choice.
Correct. And I will say, in the whole time we've had the program, we've only lost two. So I'm really proud of that. We haven't had a large bill of GPSs that we have. One mom made her kid get in the middle of a creek and fish it out. Um, we, we are excited that we will be lost to it in the long term.
That is good. Especially their drinking.
Okay, um, we will need you to get that, the formula, the.
Absolutely.
Estimate of needs fixed so that it reflects the correct number down there.
One last question. And then the electric is in anticipation of you paying for your electric out of your budget.
Yeah. So Grant, can you talk about the cushion on YouTube?
Yeah, it's about a twenty percent, but that's not twenty percent based on what was, whoever put that in last year's, what's actually being spent. So for example, the electricity bills, it's going to be well over a hundred and twenty-five. So.
Yeah, I know you can't, you can't predict month to month what your utilities are going to be. I mean, you're talking a thirty, between all three of your utilities, you're talking a thirty-five percent increase.
Well.
From the line item, not from our actual expenses.
From what we, so like the hundred and twenty-five that shows from last year, it was actually, I'll have to go back and look. It was a hundred and forty-three, I think it was. So it was a twenty percent buffer from that, not from the hundred and twenty-five. So it's about a twenty, twenty percent. All, all my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but before Grant came over as business manager, I think, I'll use your last name as an example, I think some of those line items were pencil-whipped.
Sure, a hundred percent. Historically, the juvenile bureau, um, had the operations of, it doesn't matter what we put in, what line item, um, because the total amount is the total amount. BET doesn't care. No one else cares. Put it in. And that's what they did historically. So it wasn't until Grant and I dug into the budget in the last year that we said, no, let's actually put in what we use for electric and what, so that we could accurately forecast.
So you'll see, you'll see during, for Bureau, it's not like that. It's about the same because it was buffer too much, I think, last year. So that was, either didn't go up at all or stayed stagnant with what is on here. But it's based on what we actually spent. And so I feel comfortable with the Bureau part, not shooting up a twenty percent increase because it looks, it looks good.
Because they actually accurately forecasted that piece, but didn't on the detention side. Each line item has not historically from the juvenile bureau been used for that spot.
Even though we had been Kinko, how he's did.
We're also wondering if there was any separation between JJC and what's the other building next to you?
Oh, the family tree. That, those budgets haven't ever been, oh, but, but with the utilities, yes. Um, we did look at our meters. Um, I don't see anything to tell me that they would be combined. Um, but we haven't, I haven't put in a call to the GNE though, but I can do that.
Please, please do so. So it's just hard on their line items, but I think for forecasting purposes, you guys can go back and look and see what you've paid for utilities over the last five years.
Yeah, we have the last four years counted.
And compare those and. I went in and pulled through MUNIS, through paper copies or everything. I went back myself three years and put in every single amount on every single invoice from AEG, OG&E, ONG, you name it. And then move back. And that's, that's where those numbers came from, where the twenty percent increase, what we're actually spending, not what was gone here. And did you guys get hit with, I know most of us probably don't have the letters from OG&E, that the rates were going up certain amount because of the ice storms and all of that. You guys probably are going to have rate increases for that as well.
Yeah.
And that's all.
We see that.
All right. Anything else on on this? I just, I think if we can look at litigation or other grant funding to finish this out, I think it helps whenever you're going to get a grant for this in the future, to show this is how we've been able to do this, is through grant litigation funding. Right up as opposed to us taking away from somewhere else and doing general fund. Just looks like, oh, you know.
Absolutely. We have been in talks with a couple of different agencies who would be interested in a match. Absolutely. We have been in talks with a couple of different agencies who would be interested in a match. Um, so we've been looking into that and seeing what that final cost would be, but I don't have any specifics yet.
You good on detention?
Anybody else have any questions on detention? If not, just move on to Bureau.
Okay, so just so you know, so for Bureau, I talked to Albert a few times about this between the first copy came out, second copy, um, the, the one column, and I redid them here and I can pass them if you want, or we can just.
Do we need to get the first copy?
The one, well, the one you have right there, determined uncovered by officer, it should have been zeroed out on the which it, between the, yeah, those should have been zeroed out. So I just redid that and made copies if you want, or you can just, if you want to just do it.
Just do it when you bring your detention one back.
Okay, so I already, so they're done. Um, that was the only thing on that, just to make sure that it wasn't showing, you know, storm on, on anything there. Uh, I'm sorry, man. Okay, I'll do that. Nobody else. So for Bureau, like we discussed, one, one thing in there is the computers. Um, so you'll see a definite increase, um, in cost for the computers. Otherwise, you'll see in there the utilities part, there's really not much of a change from the budget last year to this year. And again, that's because I was looking at actuals of what we are actually spending over the last few years. And based on that, I feel those numbers are pretty good to stay almost stagnant with what. So there wasn't a twenty percent increase or anything like that. It was about where they're at. Um, and then, you know, changes in janitorial supplies, uh, the ankle monitors, um, that's really, oh, and I'm sorry, the two positions, uh, that we talked about with detention, the thirty five percent will come from Bureau for those.
Part of the reason there's not a great increase in utilities for Bureau, we only paid thirty five percent of those billed out of the Bureau. So if those fluctuate, it's at a much smaller scale than on the detention sixty five percent side. Now, on detention as well as Bureau, um, going up to your travel, I see there's significant increases. Is that just the cost of travel or? Part of it, but really, we've never put much in travel. We have like one line item that would just transfer from detention to Bureau depending on which conference we had that year. Um, we have actually spent more in travel, they just never put it on the estimate of means that way. Um, and so that significant increase is A, because travel is more, but B, because they just always had it in and M and O didn't put it in that category. So then you would be just transferring money from M and O to your travel? Yes, and then some of it is travel.
If, then the amount of training, and this, this isn't my arena, this is, is more for them, but from what I see is at least out of juvenile, they don't hesitate on turning their train and going to conferences and up, up to par on everything, so.
Well, and I didn't know if there were like additional conferences that you were likely to attend or. So one, uh, increase for this next year will be the continuation of our F B I leader training. This is the first year we've ever been invited to do that. Um, and so there will be a, hopefully the twelve thousand of it is anticipated in that, um, throughout the whole year. And we do have our A C A conference also that's this year, that's only every three years. So those are two things that are recurring expenses, but don't always hit at the same budget every year. Part of the problem is, especially as we're trying to stay ahead of the game with the kids, and we actually just had, um, O J A paid for Bruce to go to Ohio and see a facility there. Um, part of the problem is, it's not like with my H R team where I can send them to a local training. If we're gonna go, we have to go see a facility somewhere else. And so it's really hard for us to do that here locally, because there aren't any, there aren't any juvenile facilities that are running hours. Um, so for us to stay ahead of the game and to keep the population is something that we're poured heavily into.
What's such a big bump in janitorial supplies?
Uh, costs are through the roof. Um, especially kind of like what Keith talked about, our, our paper goods have been through the roof. Um, paper towels, toilet paper for the building, all of those pieces have been extremely expensive. And again, those are going off of actual costs. This is the first year that we went back and said, okay, how much are we paying for paper towels? How much are we paying for trash bags? How much are we paying for those pieces? And we're trying to adequately allocate in each line item what those are, instead of just saying total M and O at the bottom line.
Anybody have anything? We have a, there a motion to receive the estimates of needs for juvenile Bureau and juvenile detention? Knowing that we will have a base on those.
And then there is not any changes on our special.
So maybe. Second.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed? Eyes have it. Um, the lives of us for watching.
Yeah, that's about it.
So Mike, Albert.
Eric.
Planning that we're getting.
Eric.
Eric, yeah, Eric's the only one that's.
But he is not here, so let's go ahead and do, do our lunch and then get back and try to get back on schedule. Is there a motion to recess?
One thirty.
Until one thirty?
On this room.
Yeah, in this room. We got a motion, we have a second. We have a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed? We're in recess.